Hello, how is everyone today?
Great.
City commission meeting for March 19th will come to order. City clerk, if you'll do the roll call, please.
Commissioner Abraham.
Present.
Mr. Gault.
Present.
Mr. Rhodes.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Mayor Kayler.
Present. Tonight, I'm going to ask Commissioner Abraham if he'll do our invocation. And we have a special guest tonight to do the Pledge of Allegiance. A special friend of mine, Cecilia Kayler. So Commissioner Abraham.
Our Father who art in heaven, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you for each other. We thank you for family and friends. Father, this day, we pray and we ask to help us with something that we all struggle with. Father, we ask that you help us not to judge each other. We pray that we get to know each other a little better. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
I'm in. Okay, Cecilia, you?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I'd like to say that Cecilia is, you're at St. Mary's Elementary School. Tell them what grade you're in.
Second grade.
And so, didn't she do a great job?
She did. She did. Good job. Good job, Cecilia.
City clerk, I mean, city manager, any additions or deletions?
Uh, no.
Thank you. Okay, tonight, I have a special recognition of someone that's in the audience. Dr. Greg Ross, if you'll come up here, please, to the podium.
I'm good. How are you?
Well, it's my pleasure to have Dr. Greg Ross here tonight. And I guess I met you about a year and a half ago?
Probably so.
And it was a phone call. And since that phone call, I have gotten to know him better. And the amazing work that Dr. Ross has done at McNabb School. He's the principal at McNabb School. And he'll be leaving us soon. And it will be a loss for us, but I have to say that, you know, you're going on and you're going to be doing great things for the state of Kentucky in education. We certainly appreciate everything you've done for the Paducah City school system, and especially for McNabb School District. So tonight, I would like to give you a Duke of Paducah Award. To all to whom these presents shall come greeting, know you that Dr. Greg Ross is named a Duke of Paducah. I hereby confer this honor with all the rights, privileges, and responsibilities thereunto appertaining, in witness, in testimony whereof, I have caused these letters to be made patent and the seal of the city to be herunto affixed on this, here at Paducah, the 19th day of March, in the year of our Lord, 2013. Gail Kayler, Mayor. Would you like to say something tonight? Come on. You've got some people back here that know you.
Well, I just want to say thank you. I love, I love my home. I mean, I'm born and raised Paducah. And, you know, when Mayor asked me to come, I had no idea. I thought that I was maybe speaking on behalf of something. But I'm just honored, you know? And how lucky are we, you know, to have a mayor? And it's so funny, because the day I put, I sent a letter to the editor in the newspaper, but because I'm just so grateful. You know, we have a mayor that can form a relationship with an autistic boy in a school, and, and no news media, no journalists, nothing, just comes to the school and spends time with them. You know, how lucky are we? How lucky are we to have, you know, a chamber that's nationally recognized? But yet, each part of it, from the president down to the secretaries, take time to read with kids and spend time and make them a part of their lives. How lucky are we to have, you know, the Kiwanis and Rotary Club that speak at our school often and donate? I mean, we're just so blessed. The chief of police who makes a point to come into our school year after year and talk about his life. We're just so fortunate. And they don't just give, you know? It's not just public. We have a coach from a private school that, you know, brings this whole basketball team to spend time with our kids and donate everything from food to money to clothing. We're just blessed, and I'm very thankful to be part of this community. Very, very honored and thankful. So, I don't just, and I'm also fortunate to have the greatest staff and parents ever. You know, I'm just, I'm just very lucky. And it's definitely a bittersweet move. I'm going on to be the Director of Next Generation Professionals for the state. So I'll still have a connection with Paducah in reference to school effectiveness, teacher effectiveness, and leadership effectiveness, and diversification. But, you know, it's just a broader scale. But I'm just very thankful, and I'm extremely honored, extremely honored. So thank you all. I appreciate this. I gotta get back to masquerade ball. But thank you all so much. I'm very thankful.
Okay, we have a couple of presentations tonight. Civic Beautification Dogwood Trail. You'll come forward, Row and Dabney. The most beautiful time in Paducah.
It is, and we're not sure when it's going to come, but we know that it is on its way. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for having us. And as you all know, it's that time of year. Our 49th Annual Trail, and which you know that's what next year means, is the 50th, which we're not even going to talk about that till we get through the next few weeks. But we want to make you all aware that, that our trail will be happening in the, dogwoods will be blooming within the next couple of weeks. And determining that will be how many 70-degree days we have, or 40 degrees or less days consistently. So the first or second week in April, they'll be blooming. And the signs are already out. The cities already have placed all of the signs. And Dabney, are here, and I're here from the Civic Beautification Board, just to remind everybody on the trail, they should have received their postcards today in the mail, everyone who is on the trail, to light up. Even if you don't have a dogwood in your yard, light your front yard, anything that's blooming, your shrubs, your walkway, because it's amazing how many people are in Paducah to drive our Dogwood Trail. A lot of you may go south to the Cherry Blossom Festivals, or Azalea Festivals, or Dogwood Festivals, and other people come to Paducah for that. I didn't realize that until I was in tourism, but there are hundreds and thousands of, not hundreds of thousands, hundreds and thousands of people who come to Paducah for this. So on about April 9th, if everything goes like we think it'll go, we'll be back here again presenting awards for the homes that have extraordinarily beautiful, lighted, they have to be lighted, dogwood trees. And then, we're planning on judging around the 7th, and we'll let the media know for sure when that's going to be, depending on when they bloom. It may be later, we don't know. Last year was our earliest blooming year ever. Then this Saturday, we have something really special going on, and Dabney's going to tell you about that.
Thank you, Row. Yes, this Saturday, we have our Dogwood Tree Sale. And the sale will take place at six different nurseries here in Paducah. We have Blooms and Gardens, Eads, Edwards, Montgomery Gardens, and Walls, oh Sanders, excuse me, I think I skipped Sanders, apologize. But we will have lots of dogwoods for sale at each place. Each nursery will have their own discount on the trees. The Civic Beautification Board members will be there from 10 till 2. We have little planting instructions that we put with each of our trees, so that you have nice instructions on how to plant your tree and how to care for it. And last year, we sold over 120 trees at this event. We have an added nursery this year, so we're hoping to sell more. We'd like, we'd love to double that, in thinking about our 50th celebration next year. So we'd love to think that people are getting ready for the 50th as well as this year. Also, the money that we raise during this sale, we take a dollar off of each, we're given a dollar from each tree. And that money is donated to the Children's Memorial Garden in Noble Park. And if you're not familiar with that, this is a garden that was started after the Oklahoma City bombing. And it was, it was done to commemorate the 19 children who died in the Oklahoma City bombing. And they had it next to the swimming pool in years past, but after the ice storm, there was enough damage that it needed to be moved. And we've moved it to the, a beautiful area of oaks just across from the tennis courts in Noble Park. And love to have any donations, or memorials, or honorariums made to that, so you might keep that in mind for things. But we use that money from our sale to help support that for the planting of trees, benches, signage, that sort of thing. The other activity I did want to mention is Arbor Day, which will take place on April the 19th at the Children's Memorial Garden in Noble Park. And it will also be between 10 and 2. And everyone's invited to come and help with the planning. We'd love to have children and grandchildren, because we're going to let them do some of the perennials, I believe. I think that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In a couple of weeks, hopefully.
All right. Thank you. All right, going on into our meeting, Commissioner Abraham? Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. We have one more presentation. Paducah Renaissance Alliance, Lisa Thompson, and it's on the Four Points Update. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I have with me my three of our committee chairs from the Paducah Renaissance Alliance. And basically, what we're here to do tonight is to start, hopefully, what will become a habit of making a presentation to you all, as well as the public, about what the Paducah Renaissance Alliance is doing. And go through the Four Point Program, and what each one of these committees are working on, so we can kind of give you all an update about what it is that we're kind of focusing on. And it's not just these activities, but we only have time to focus on, highlight on one of them. As several of you know, the Department of Main Street, also known as the Paducah Renaissance Alliance, is a national Main Street program. It's a restoration, rehabilitation, preservation program that's sponsored by the National Historic Trust. The Paducah Renaissance Alliance is an accredited Main Street program, both in the state of Kentucky and at the national level. We follow a four-point approach to restoration of our downtown and lower town. And it's divided up into four committees. There's the Organization Committee, which works on volunteer development, communications, public relations, fundraising, those kind of things. The Design Committee helps to beautify our public spaces. We look at storefronts, how can we improve them? We also seek to educate property owners and merchants and business people about good design practices to improve our historic downtown. And then we have the Economic Development, or Economic Recruitment Committee, which focuses on market research, how best to help and assist the businesses that are here, work on sustaining them, as well as recruitment. Financial assistance is a big part of that, as well as property development, and developing a district-wide strategy for the Renaissance District. And then lastly, but not least, is our Promotions Committee, which works on marketing strategy, image development. What's the brand for the Paducah Renaissance Alliance? And creating retail promotions and special events. So here are the four committees, Organization, Design, Economic Development, and Promotions. Organization. Rose Marie Steele is our new chairperson for this committee, and she's going to give you a brief overview of some of the things that you'll be working on.
Mayor and Commissioners, Carol's grinning. The Organization and Development Committee is very encompassing. It trains and develops leaders for the community's revitalization efforts, and it builds a governing framework that includes businesses, property owners, citizens, schools, churches, the Chamber of Commerce, public officials, historians, and preservation organizations. Everyone must work together to maintain downtown's stability into the future. Local Main Street programs rely on a strong volunteer base to form the committees to administer the Main Street Four Point Approach. These volunteers are a key component to the success of all the committees. The Org Committee is responsible for volunteer development and public relations, and it's also the fundraising arm of PRA. So I'm currently working on recruiting volunteer committee members who will not only be proactive and involved, but will also best represent a cross-section of the community. As Lisa and Darlene Mazzone have done with the PRA Board, we're looking to recruit members to the Organization Committee who will bring appropriate skill sets to the group for the achievement of our goals. And on that note, I'd like to extend an invitation to everyone present, or in the viewing or listening audience, to contact the PRA office if they have a passion about Paducah, or a specific revitalization project, and would like to join one of the committees. With the quilt show fast approaching, PRA will be working with the Expo Center and the Carson Center on the Quilt Show Parking Lot fundraiser for the Columbia Club. So any organizations or individuals who'd like to assist can contact PRA at 444-8649, or email info@paducahalliance.org, and then they will get that information to me. Are there any questions or comments about the Org Committee?
How many volunteers do you usually need for the parking?
I actually, I'm going to be working with Susan on that. We're meeting this week. Do you have any comments or suggestions about that?
I just wondered how many you had to average that it took to...
Lisa, do you know?
It takes about 20 volunteers.
Yeah. So we're looking at organizations and individuals both, to see what we could do.
And it's a great way to meet folks from out of town.
That's absolutely right. Everybody's in tourism.
Thank you. So then, the second approach that we take is our Design Committee. And Sharon Poet is the Chair of our Design Committee. She's also on the Board, and has been a longtime Main Street advocate.
I have been. Hi. How are you all this evening?
Good.
Good. You'll see up here, Lisa's asked me to talk a little bit about one of the goals that Design Committee is working on with PRA this year, and that is wayfinding. And wayfinding is pretty much what it sounds like. It's helping folks to find their way around the Renaissance area. And it's been one of those needs that everyone has known is a need for a long time. Some of you all have been on the Commission, others of you all have been involved downtown, lower town, in other ways. And you know that several years ago, the city commissioned a Renaissance area master plan, and one of the key components of that Renaissance area master plan was looking at how do we connect and help people see the connections between the great downtown business district, and the great lower town arts district, and all of the fun things that are going on at the riverfront. That Renaissance area master plan is completed, and we're ironing out some final wrinkles. There are some really good things that came out of the Renaissance area master plan. On the wayfinding issue, it offers some good general guidance about the focus areas where signage is needed. And it also offers some really interesting, general points to keep in mind about streetscaping. So what are the lights, the benches, the trashcans, bike racks? Those kinds of things that should be part of those key pedestrian pathways that will connect lower town, downtown, and the riverfront. On the Design Committee, we've also been lucky to have the help of Derwin Nursery. Some of you all may know Derwin. And Derwin brings just a lovely skill set in terms of thinking about things in a large way. And the slide that you're seeing in front of you is one of three that we wanted to show you all tonight, just to give you a sense of some of the things that the Design Committee's been thinking about as we begin to think about wayfinding. And I would point out that we're very much in the beginning-to-think-about-wayfinding kind of stage right now. On this slide, you'll see in lavender, the parking lots that are in the downtown area. You'll see in the sort of yellowy-orange, the massive buildings that we have in our downtown business core. And out there, to the right, you will see in lower town, both the galleries and the points of interest that are sprinkled about lower town. And so, Derwin really, for us, this really helps us to sort of visualize what's there? What are the destinations? And it also brings in the key fact that most folks arrive in downtown by automobile. That's how most of us get around these days. And so, once we're down here, how do we get out of the cars? How do we get to places? How do you connect those places to each other? Thank you. The second one is one that I really find very interesting. Derwin has sort of outlined for us here several different districts, or I like to think of them as usage groupings that are in this downtown central core. You'll see the Convention and Expo Center grouping. You'll see the lower town arts district grouping. You'll see the riverfront grouping. And behind that, that sort of cultural amenities grouping. Running out along Broadway, the retail district grouping. And then off to the left-hand side, that civic core grouping. Those are all different kinds of usage areas that bring folks downtown, both local folks and folks from out of town. And a lot of times, when people come down here, they need to know how to get from one of these grouping areas to another, or they may come with several different things in mind. And for folks that are coming from around the region, or even further away, it's really important to have signage that gets folks from one kind of usage area to another, and it helps us to recognize what those are. Did I hit the right thing? Not only did I not hit the right thing, I have made it non-functional. I'm not touching the computer again. I'm going to put my hands over here, way away from the keyboard. And this last visualization is one that Derwin did for us, that begins to look at some of the other kinds of things we need to think about. You'll see the sort of reddish octagons that are sort of those primary places where folks in automobiles stop and make decisions about where they're going to turn. In the yellow squares, you'll see those kinds of decision points where folks who are pedestrians stop and make decisions about where they need to walk, depending on what their destination is. And one of the things that we have to look at, is we look at wayfinding, is that recognition that we have to get folks downtown and into a parking spot somewhere, and into a spot that makes sense for their destination. And then we also have to guide people around as they're walking around our historic core area. And so, this is just another visualization of that. One of these things that I really like here, and we don't have in front of us, the Renaissance area master plans, final conception of how do we begin to focus on those pedestrian paths? Once folks are downtown, how do you focus on the pedestrian paths? And there's these sort of three different loops. There's a core downtown business loop, and then sort of an arts district loop, and then sort of a civic core loop, that are sort of those key things. And what's really very interesting is that Derwin sort of independently, he's a very much on-the-ground kind of guy, let's walk around, let's look, let's see what the signage is, and what kinds of visuals you see up and down streets. And the two merge together really very well. And so, we are very much at the beginning of this process. As we look at the pedestrian pathways, we'll be looking for opportunities to weave in sculpture. That's one of those things that's been talked about for a long time, both as a way to help people find their way down the street, and to make the way along the street a little more interesting. We'll also be looking for opportunities for partnerships with Civic Beautification and other folks who volunteer so much to the community, and may come out and be willing to help with it. Right now, we are in a process of waiting for some exploration on one of the Renaissance area master plan suggestions, and whether it's viable or not. And as we sort of get past that point, we're looking forward to going out and talking to the stakeholders downtown and lower town, sort of sharing some of these ideas, getting input. And once we've kind of figured out the where, then we get to what a lot of people see as the more fun part, which is how do you actually design the look of that signage? How do you design the look of, and sort of create a cohesiveness as you're getting around? So that's one of the things that we have on tap on the Design Committee for the upcoming year.
So then, the third point is economic development, or economic restructuring. And Mari McGarvey from Paducah Bank is actually the Chair of this committee, but she had a conflict this evening, wasn't able to join us. But one of the things that we are about ready, weeks away from actually presenting to the Commission, is our roof stabilization program. It came to light last summer, that we have a large number of buildings in our downtown that have roof problems. And the roofs, or some of them are so bad, that they're actually impacting buildings, you know, their neighbors. So what we set out to do was to look and see how other communities handle the same issue. And we came up with a program that's in draft form, that's been circulated through the other department heads, and through the legal department, that basically would create a rehabilitation program. So if you were a property owner in the Renaissance District, and you had a roof that was failing, that we would, the city would seek to help you stabilize that roof, and that we would be looking for you, as a property owner, to put a roof that at least had a 10-year warranty on it. We would also limit the amount. It would only be eligible for those roofs that would cost in excess of $35,000. So hopefully, that would help us address some of our larger, bigger properties that we're having problems with. But that we would also only give a third of that money towards the roof replacement. So if you came to us and you had a $35,000 roof, the city would contribute $11,666 for that structure. And that the maximum award would be $50,000, which meant that the whole project would be a $150,000 roof. So that the city would, again, would be willing to chip in a third of that cost. And in return, by stabilizing the roof, it would greatly increase the stability of some of these buildings, and hopefully, it would not cause us to lose them. We went back and forth about whether or not the program should be sort of a mothballing kind of program. And in a sense, this is what this is. But if you are also working on a larger project, that also gives you the opportunity to take advantage of this, and use these dollars towards occupancy of a building. And then the last point that the Four Points works on is promotions and events. And Landi Bryant is our Promotions Chair, and she's going to talk to you about Live on Broadway.
Hello, everybody. Live on Broadway has become a very well-loved event. We know we all enjoy it, and it brings a lot of the population into downtown Paducah. So we've often thrown around ideas of how to involve more of the community, how to get more people down there. It is for community engagement, but if people go visit the vendors and places down there, that's obviously a bonus. So we've got Nathan Lynn and Josh Coffey up there. It's a great shot, Bond in the Mash played in the main stage last year. So as you see there, greater focus on community engagement, innovative opportunities for stakeholders. We have gone back and forth. We've just recruited some new members on the Promotions Committee, and a lot of people have a lot of different ideas about the area that should be focused on. Originally, we had kind of, we've thrown back and forth, the Third and Fifth Street kind of growth, and the Third Street making it a little more intimate, but in the end, I think the Fifth Street is going to be more fruitful for the downtown area. But we want to showcase the vibrancy, energy, and modern blend of all things hip and historic. And one of the really great things that I don't think as many vendors have taken the opportunity to do, that we really want to reach out to them, to let them know that they can do, is to have a booth in the areas that are a little busier. So say somebody, a lower town artist, or a vendor that's a little further down the street, that might not have quite as much foot traffic, are welcome to have a booth with no charge, closer, maybe down towards the riverfront. So they can either sell their wares there, or they could drive people towards their bricks and mortar location. And we're really hopeful that a lot of people will take advantage of that this year. Another big change we're going to have is, in order to get lower town involved as well, and to really promote Second Saturday, on the Thursday before the Second Saturday of every month, we're going to have a big, excuse me, a big event on the Wilson Stage at the riverfront. We're going to showcase local and regional bands down there for that. And then on the Second Saturday, we're going to really focus on driving people to lower town and visiting the galleries down there. So we'll have music along Broadway and around Market House Square. We've also tried to expand on some ideas for other things besides music, getting the Paducah Improv Group. getting the Paducah Improv Group involved in some capacity. We've always done inflatables, but we've thrown around things with pets, bikes, cornhole. You know, we really wanna try to enhance it as much as we can. It's a really great event, but you know, you can always grow and get better. So, Live on Broadway, a nostalgic reminder of downtown's heyday. Live on Broadway truly speaks to the experience found only in historic Paducah. So, does anyone have any questions? A lot of great ideas are roaming around out there, so we're really excited about getting going. And Go to Town is another one of the promotions that falls under the Promotions Committee. We also do a quilt, quilt week promotion. We also do the farmer's market. So, but as Lisa said, we don't have enough time to focus on one thing, and Live on Broadway is a pretty, pretty big chunk of that, so thank you all.
You're welcome.
Any questions for me?
No, I don't have any.
Thank you. So, you're talking about maybe making a presentation to us on a semi-regular basis about all the exciting things going on downtown?
Yeah, I'd like to do that on a quarterly basis. Have the committee chairs come in and talk about one project that they, you know, are really starting to get traction on.
Be great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll go into our meeting now. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the reading of the minutes for March 12th, 2013, City Commission Meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the city clerk be approved as written.
Second.
Any discussion? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
We'll go into municipal orders. Commissioner Galt, please.
Upon the recommendation of the City Manager, the Board of Commissioners, the City of Paducah ordered that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Do we have anyone here tonight to talk on that? City Manager?
Chief is here, if there are any questions about this. We have just one, it's a firefighter, relieved driver, actually.
Okay. Any discussion? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Waiving Penalty and Interest for ML-Wide Operations", DB Holtman, in the amount of $215.79 in regards to September 30th, 2011, quarterly payroll withholding tax payments be adopted.
Second.
Hi, John.
Hello, good morning, or good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. A little history. Peril taxes are remitted four times a year following the quarter ending date. And so that would be March 31, June 30, September 30, and December 31st. City ordinance gives a month of grace following the quarter ending for business to remit taxes withheld from the employee paycheck. The request before you tonight actually was due October 31st. However, it was not received by that due date. Instead, the United States Postal Service postmark was November the 2nd, which is two days beyond the month of grace. Therefore, I cannot recommend that we waive the penalty or interest because neither city code nor state law establishes any procedure that would allow me or the City Manager to administratively forgive interest and penalty imposed by City Ordinance. And additionally, we have an equity issue with waiving penalty and interest, in this case for $215.79, because the city has routinely levied the same penalty and interest against all others who have made the same type of an error. The law is very clear, therefore, I recommend that the waiver not be granted.
Thank you. Any discussion?
The amount of time lapsed is that, if I read this right, was it a year?
Actually, we did not respond to them for about a year, but they're not being penalized for that length of time. They're only being penalized for being late, as if it were a month after it took place.
Right. Let's talk about the time, the length of time.
Okay.
Typically, is that, is that the norm? I mean, in the department?
Right. It's typically not that long. We were backlogged on some issues, and that was not the only one. We had a number that were just like that, and we're just doing some catch-up. Again, we didn't penalize them for beyond. If you were to go back in time, it was as if we were back one month after it was due. So, we didn't charge them interest for that. So we just went back in time.
Okay, are we working our way through that log?
We already have.
Okay, alright.
And this is what we've done in all previous instances of similar issues.
Yes, ma'am.
We've only gone back, we have not charged them penalty and interest past the time they were due.
That's correct.
Because I know this has come up several times
Right.
since I've been on the commission.
Right. You mean before you were asking for a waiver?
Right.
Typically, the folks are asking for a waiver because it's late two or three days, or whatever it may be, and they just, "I can't, I can't waive it." And so, their only recourse is to go through me, through the City Manager, and then to you all, because you all make the law, therefore, you can change the law. And we have many, many, many people ask us to waive it, but of course, we can't. Very few get to this level. But if they ask us to bring it to you, we'll bring it to you. And that's what's happened here.
And I think we have to be fair with everyone.
Yes, ma'am. We try to do that.
Commissioner Galt?
I called John earlier today because I too, like Commissioner Abraham, had questions about the year lapsed. But as I understood, after having a conversation with him, it was paid, but it was postmarked. The federal postmark was two days past the day that it should have been there.
That's correct.
And I even see someone in the audience that we've gone through the same exact thing with a few years back. And I understand, we have to do the same thing and treat everyone equitably. But my question was in regards to what happened down in finance. How come we were a year behind in them getting the notice?
Exactly.
But in regards to the penalty, I do think we have to administer it equitably.
City Clerk?
So, just wanna make sure what we're voting on here. I got caught like that one time before.
Okay. City Manager, we are voting to deny the request for the waiver.
If you vote yes, you're gonna give them the waiver. I think that's the way it's been written.
I think it was, the motion was in the affirmative.
Yes.
You need to vote no if you don't want it to happen.
That's correct.
So yes is?
It is confusing.
In favor, right?
Of waiving it?
Yes.
Okay.
And no is in favor?
I know you got caught one.
Okay. I'm nervous.
I remember that happening. You had to come on camera and apologize.
It was terrible.
Commissioner Abraham?
No.
Commissioner Galt?
No.
Commissioner Rhodes?
No.
Mayor Kayler?
No.
Okay, Commissioner Abraham?
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Adopting City of Paducah, Kentucky Public Housing Agency Annual Plan for Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program for Fiscal Year 2013 be adopted."
Second.
Danny?
Hello.
Hi.
How are you all?
Good.
The first municipal order in front of you is for adopting the annual plan for the Section 8 program, which we have to do every year. We submit an annual plan, and every five years, we submit a five-year plan. Questions?
It was a lot to read in the packet.
Yes.
It was a lot.
So now, I don't have any questions?
Well, I just, I mean, it looks like you're gonna be up here for the next couple of, uh... So I'll just go ahead and ask this question now. It was, one particular part of the, of the packet was the Family Self-Sufficiency Program. And that was, I was particularly interested in that because that's an opportunity for, to do just exactly what the title says, for families to become self-sufficient. And if you would talk a little bit about that program and any families over the years that's taken advantage of that and moved into homeownership or etc.
Yes. Commissioner did call me yesterday, and I did prepare a little statistics and explanation for you all. The Family Self-Sufficiency Plan started out as a demonstration program back in the early 90s, which we participated in, and it turned into a HUD federal program under the Section 8 program. And basically, what we look for is to choose participants of our program that are interested in becoming economically self-sufficient. Once we gather the information on them and they indicate that they want to participate, we sign a separate contract with them. They have to be employed or go, or about to be employed. When their rent goes up according to their income, then we match the amount of the rent increase according to earned income. And then we place it into a savings account each month. So we calculate that difference, place it into a savings account. They still have to pay the increased rent, but it's a five-year program. We contribute to the escrow account each month on behalf of that particular participant. At the end of the five-year period, then they can draw that, those funds out and use it for homeownership assistance, relocation, any goal-related activity. And we approve that when they make that request. We've had three participants since 2010 to actually purchase homes. We've distributed a total of $93,000 to graduating FSS participants. And they come off the program when they graduate. So they come off the Section 8 program.
Okay. Like I said, that caught my eye, and I wanted more details on that. And that's, that's a good program.
I like that it encourages homeownership.
Absolutely, absolutely.
At the bottom of your sheet, we do have a separate homeownership program. We now have 24 homeowners that we're assisting to pay their mortgage each month. You can see the breakout of that. We have three in the Fountain Avenue area. We have three under Habitat. We have five that's elderly or disabled, and nineteen that has children in the home. So we do have an active homeownership program also.
Now, I know Danny, in the, in your Section 8 housing rental program, I know you all periodically go in and inspect.
Yes.
Do you also do that with the homeownership?
Yes. We do inspect those every year. Make sure they're keeping it up to standard and so forth.
And I'll just say this to everyone. I had a wonderful letter about Danny and seeing his praises, what a wonderful job he does with the Section 8 program here in the city. And she had been in the program here in Paducah and commended him so, so much for his help with her and how she was almost homeless, and you helped her get the assistance to find an apartment. And she had, she got married, and they moved out of Paducah to Illinois. And she did not have the help in Illinois that you had given her here. So, it's a great program for people that need it and gives them the ability to move on and be self-sufficient, so.
Thank you.
The conversation I had with Danny, the reason it's caught my eye, the title is that we, my dad moved us here in Paducah in 1972, and we moved into public housing. And at 12 years old, it all looked the same. And I was kinda, kinda, I was kinda intrigued by that, and I was asking my dad, you know, about that. And he pretty much laid it out like what this says. He said, you know, "We're gonna stay here for a while, and then we're gonna move." And he explained to me exactly what that meant. And as, as time played out, I got a better understanding of the initiative on the Section 8 side of it, but then the self-initiative that has to happen within the family. And when those two things come together, you take advantage of those situations, and you're successful in what you're trying to do, in this particular case, become a homeowner. So, it's a good, it's a good program, man. I appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
I'm fascinated that it has a 61-page document. Without any prior conversation, you and I had the same question, except you got to go first.
It's alphabet, man.
I guess it's the alphabet. How many houses do we have in the Section 8 program, would you guess?
We have 491 units within the city and county.
That's a nice estimate, 491.
Thirty percent of those are in the county. So they're not all within the city limits.
My question's a little different, actually. Kentucky 137, which I assume is our program, that's the way we refer to it. The waiting list seems to be still 666 people.
Yes.
What are we doing and how are we addressing those needs? I mean, can we, just in general terms, I got, I read through, but it all sounds good, but from a practical standpoint?
From a practical standpoint, two things has happened in the last 12 to 16 months that have slowed down the waiting list process. Scholar House was one. We, the city agreed to provide assistance for all the residents of the Scholar House, and that's 48 units, which kind of slows our process down because when, we can only do a certain number each month. And when someone comes off the program, then we normally go down the waiting list to access the next person. Throwing 48 persons into that mix slowed down the overall process of the waiting list. Our waiting list used to run anywhere from six to eight months in waiting period. Now, we're, we're looking at 12 to 16 months in waiting period. And that's not all. The economic conditions, people are not finding employment and higher wages as they used to. So that slows down that process because they want to stay in place and keep the assistance that they have. Now, the sequester situation is going on, which is gonna impact the program somewhat. The sequester actually is a 5% cut across the board, so we're actually gonna have to reduce 5% of our total. And that will come through attrition. We're not gonna terminate anyone. But that's gonna slow the waiting list down also, so. There's a number of factors that affect the waiting list process. This is the first time we've ever had that many people on the waiting list since I've been here.
Okay. Thank you. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Adopting the City of Paducah, Kentucky, Paducah Housing Agency Revised Administrative Plan for Section 8 Housing be adopted."
Second.
Administrative plan, we have to update certain things in there. The waiting list data, as we've already discussed. And we added management assessment objectives, which is a part of the plan also. So those were the only two changes or additions to the plan as it was previous.
And you have to do this every year?
Yes.
And how many pages is this?
That is probably, what, 60-some pages?
Not as many as Rick has sometimes had to come up with, but anything that you do that involves federal funds is laborious.
Yes.
Any questions or comments on this?
No. Laborious. I like that.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Galt?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay. Says, "I move that a municipal order entitled, 'A Municipal Order Waiving Penalty and Interest'..." Wait a minute. My bad. Too many papers.
Too many papers. "I move that a municipal order entitled, 'A Municipal Order Adopting Revisions to the Utility Allowances for the Section 8 Housing Program as Required by the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as Revised, Be Adopted."
Second.
Utility allowances, we make an adjustment each year when utility rates adjust. As you see, gas, natural gas utility decreased 21.7%. Sewer increased 2.3%. Propane decreased .373%. In electricity, we have to do a blended rate between Jackson Purchase and Paducah Power because we service both areas. That increased, the blended rate is 3.75. So, those are deductions that we take off of the income of individuals that have to be responsible for the utilities.
Any questions? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Thank you, Danny.
Okay. Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
We'll try.
Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order Amending Municipal Order Number 1035 Entitled, 'A Municipal Order Establishing Guidelines for Providing Economic Incentives to Qualified Projects Located, Locating Within the Boundaries of the City of Paducah, Be Adopted."
Second. City Manager? You wanna talk on this? It's about our new economic development.
A number of years ago, the City of Paducah adopted criteria and guidelines for its economic incentives in support of new and expanding industry in the community. Included in that criteria was a minimum wage requirement that was attached to the minimum wage requirement that the Kentucky Industrial Development Authority uses for its economic incentive program. Recently, with the recruitment of TeleTech Industries, the community had the opportunity to bring in a 450-employee customer care center, call center, that did not meet the state standard, which by the way, is, is much higher in McCracken County than it is for a lot of counties in the state. The per hour rate that TeleTech has committed to for the 450 jobs is $9.50 per hour. I believe the state prevailing rate for the McCracken County area is in excess of $11 per hour. So, there's quite a gap there. Nonetheless, that many jobs at the $9.50 rate produces a lot of economic impact and a lot of employment opportunity for local and area people. So, it is believed to be in the best interest of the community to go forward. With that said, it is necessary, we believe, to amend the current municipal order setting forth the criteria to allow for customer call centers to not be subject to the wage rate that's tied into the Kentucky Industrial Development Authority. And in discussion with Paducah Economic Development, we believe it's also sensible to exclude warehousing distribution facilities as well. Now, this is not to say that they would be considered pre-economic incentives by the city without some standard there. It's simply removing the tie-in to the state prevailing wage rate and the tie-in to what the state requires for its financial participation for jobs associated with those two classes of, of industry. So, I would entertain any questions you might have.
And it, you know, I think this gives us the opportunity to bring a lot of entry-level jobs into the community, and they do have benefits as well.
Well, your, your current ordinance does require 50% employer participation in a health plan, and that remains unchanged.
Right.
That's good.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
We'll go on to ordinances adoptions. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Approving the Final Report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the Proposed Final Subdivision for Property Known as Greenway Village, Subdivision Phase One, Accepting Dedication of Right-of-Way and Public Utility Easements, Establishing Front Yard Setbacks, and Authorizing the Mayor to Subscribe a Certificate of Approval on the Platte." This ordinance is summarized as follows. "An Ordinance Approving the Final Report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the Proposed Final Subdivision for Property Known as the Greenway Village, Subdivision Phase One, Accepting Dedication of Right-of-Way and Public Utility Easements and Establishing Front Yard Setbacks. In addition, the City of Paducah hereby authorizes the mayor to subscribe a certificate of approval on the platte."
Second.
We've discussed this before. Any comments? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay. "I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, 'An Ordinance Accepting the Bid of Mertco Incorporated for the Noble Park Pool Renovation Phase Three Project and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract for Same.' This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah accepts the bid of Mertco Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $188,466 for the Noble Park Pool Renovation Phase Three Project, which includes work for the construction of a spray pad, and authorize the mayor to execute a contract for same."
Second. Any discussion? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Article III Vehicles Drawn by Animals of Chapter 122 Vehicles for Hire of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky." This ordinance is summarized as follows. "The City of Paducah hereby amends permit section of the ordinance regulating vehicles drawn by animals."
Second. Have an amendment?
We do. And I would also like to move that the Board of Commissioners amend the ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Article III Vehicles Drawn by Animals of Chapter 122 Vehicles for Hire of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky," which was introduced at the March 12, 2013 City Commission Meeting, and is being amended to change permit regulations include a Second Amendment to Section 122-79A to add the wording, "No more than two permits per route."
Second.
Right. Now, right. Any discussion?
I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding this, that there will only, no one can apply for more than two permits per route. I mean, in other words, one company and another company.
The effect would be that there would be no more than two companies operating on the same route, or two, let me, let me use the word permities, operating on the same route. And, and that's intended to, I guess, avoid the potential for congestion or some of the potential problems that were mentioned last week. So, there are seven routes, I believe, that are authorized to be permitted in the municipal order. So, that would mean there would be a potential of 14 operations going on simultaneously, or 14 permits, I guess would be another way to look at it.
That was the other question. I had someone that had asked me if their permit was gonna cost around $600. And when I did the math, even with all seven routes, the best I could come up with, and when I talked to Mark, was the most would be $350.
And you're correct. It's 150 for the first two, I believe, and then $50 per after that, so.
Okay. All right.
All right. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Okay. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Article III Vehicles Drawn by Animals of Chapter 122 Vehicles for Hire of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky," which was introduced at the March 12, 2013 City Commission Meeting, and is being amended to change permit regulations and includes a Second Amendment to Section 122-79A to add the wording, "No more than two permits per route, be adopted as amended."
Second.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Mr. Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Accepting the Bid of Bluegrass Fire Equipment Company and Pierce Manufacturing, Inc., for Sale to the City of Two Triple Combination Pumper Trucks for Use by the Fire Department, and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract with Bluegrass Fire Equipment Company and Pierce Manufacturing Company, Inc." This ordinance is summarized as follows. "The City of Paducah accepts the bid of Bluegrass Fire Equipment Company as the vendor and Pierce Manufacturing, Inc., as the manufacturer, in the amount of $863,588 for sale to the City of Two Triple Combination Pumper Trucks for Use by the Fire Department, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. However, Pierce Manufacturing Company, Inc., has proposed a deduction in the amount of $31,234 from the proposal price if the city makes 100% prepayment for the Triple Combination Pumper Truck upon contract acceptance. If the 100% prepayment is approved, the price for the new Triple Combination Pumper Truck would be, would then be $832,354."
Second.
We talked about this last week. Do we ever name the fire trucks?
Well, that one is a Triple Paint Pumper Truck.
Never have done that? I think that'd be interesting. Do we ever christen the new trucks that come in?
No, we didn't that either.
I think that'd be fun.
Just don't dent the bumper.
We can get everybody in the community out, christen the truck and...
Let the kids name it.
Name it. I mean, they name towboats and something to think about.
Houses. Those are estates, I'm sorry.
Okay. Yep. City Clerk, please.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
All right. I don't have my speaking voice. "I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, 'An Ordinance Authorizing the Purchase of One Timeco Street Sweeper Model 600 for the City of Paducah, Kentucky, and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute a Contract for Same.' This ordinance is summarized as follows. The Finance Director is authorized to pay $180,756 for the purchase of One Timeco Street Sweeper Model 600 to Stringfellow Incorporated for the City of Paducah EPW Street Division in compliance with the Kentucky State Purchasing Contract, and authorizes the mayor to execute contract for same."
Second. Okay. We could, I think really, we should have a naming for all the new vehicles we get. Like, we could call this new street sweeper Betty, and everybody would know Betty when she's out. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Providing for the Closing of Portion of an Alley from Caldwell Street to Norton Street Located Between South Ninth Street and Walter Jeter Boulevard, and Authorizing the Mayor to Execute All Documents Relating to Same." This ordinance is summarized as follows. "The City of Paducah does hereby authorize the closing of portions of an alley from Caldwell Street to Norton Street located between South Ninth Street and Walter Jeter Boulevard, and authorizes, empowers, and directs the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed from the city to the property owners in or abutting public rights, public ways to be closed."
Second. Second. Right. Any discussion? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute an Agreement Between the City of Paducah, Kentucky and the County of McCracken, Kentucky, for the Construction and Lease of Customer Care Center to be Located Within the Paducah Commerce Park." This ordinance is summarized as follows, that the mayor is hereby authorized to execute an interlocal agreement between the City of Paducah and the County of McCracken, Kentucky, for the Design and Construction of a Customer Care Center Located Within the Paducah Commerce Park.
Second.
Okay. City Manager?
The respective amounts for the city and county are 1.35 million, and for EPDC, 300,000, which takes it up to the agreed-upon amount of $3 million. And again, it sets up the mechanism by which the 30,000-square-foot building construction costs will flow and be accounted for.
And any discussion on this? All right. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye.
City Managers' report, please.
Thank you. Do have the Fire Prevention Division of the Fire Department in the person of the Fire Chief, gonna make a, a report to you on directional change that they would like to take with respect to property maintenance. This is something that the department hit on, I think, very early in their time, both as interim administrator of the former inspections department and then carrying over to the time that it was actually placed under them. So, we have before you tonight Chief Kyle.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Okay. We wanted to give you a little report about where we are and the direction we wanna go and what impact that may have. And just give you all an illustration account, just kind of a state of the state when it comes to property maintenance, so to speak. So, this is our property maintenance program update with foreclosure and demolition actions. The goal of our, of our presentation is to alert you to the number of structures that need to be demolished and what it, an estimate of what it would cost. Alert you, alert you to the change in our procedure of how we're handling it, and alert you to the fact that, at the end of the day, we're gonna end up owning more property as a result of this change. Foreclosures, as, as we see them, are, we have several reasons of why we would acquire an interest in a piece of property. That, that may come from excessive liens and/or fines from doing inspections on property that we, we encounter on a day-to-day basis, as a result of property not being repaired, ending up with demolition cost on those properties that we've, that we've inspected. And then also, we've, we've determined that we also have a, that John and I have a collaborative effort in this, that he ends up chasing some of the same properties we do because of unpaid property taxes. So, to tell you that, I wanna give you a little bit of a picture of, of some of the numbers of properties that we're looking at. And I've got a map that I'm gonna show you. We used a $2,000 floor. Anything, $2,000 or more is what we highlighted on the map. And we have them broken down into three different groups. One is excessive liens and fines, and that's gonna be defined by color. Another one is gonna be unpaid property taxes, and then we'll have both. So, let me get to the map here. You're gonna have to remind me which color is which. Okay. The black dots are demolition address points. Those are structures that are identified on our demolition list that we currently have. You also have a, more of a maroon color that is, those are parcels with liens and delinquent taxes. And then you have a lighter color there, almost a pink, that is parcels with just inspection liens on them. And then we have red, which is... red, which is just delinquent taxes. And actually, the, there we go, let me get to it. What you can't, what might be a little bit difficult for you to see is that the black dots are actually over some of those that have both. So it's a little bit, usually by the time a structure gets to the point that it needs to be demolished, it has back taxes on it, it has excessive liens and fines on it, you know, it has everything grouped into one big category for us. So you could see some areas that we're having some trouble around the city. The, the top of the screen there is, is really identified as the north side, and then you could see some there in the center, which our efforts through Fountain Avenue and the Lower Town Project removed a lot of structures there that might have popped up years ago. And then you'll see some additional work that is popping up on the south side of town as well. Okay? These, these liens, these liens that I've talked about, they, they go back as far as 1989. That's what I can tell you for sure, 1988, '89. There may be some that date back further than that. I looked at one today. From 1989 to current date, it has a $30,000 lien on it. It's a vacant piece of property that I think we tore down the structure on. We've been mowing it ever since. It's a, it's in an estate, and there's nobody there to take care of it. And this is something that we inherited that we're trying to fix. This has taken us a, a pretty good amount of time to try to wrap our hands around what to do with it. John and I, and we've, we've decided that Steve Irvin gets to play in our group, too, that it is, it is, it's a massive undertaking to understand how all of the different pieces are connected, and how we're all monitoring property in different ways for different reasons. So it's, it's trying to pull that together so that we can decide what course of action we need to take when a piece of property starts popping up on our, on our grid. So demolitions. There's approximately 150 structures out there that need to be razed. And this is, this is due to dilapidation and impracticality to restore the structure to a habitable residence. Now, that could be accomplished, it could be restored, but, you know, it's just a matter of how deep your pockets are and how much money you want to spend on, on an old house that is, you know, reached that, reached that, that peak of, of where it might need to be torn down. An estimate of what we've put on, based on a cost that we, that we incur whenever we tear down a structure, you're looking at a little over a million dollars total. There's lots of things that are tied into that. You have, we have to have an assessment for EPA to determine whether or not there are, there is asbestos in it. We have the abatement cost if we have to tear the structure down to get asbestos, asbestos-like materials out of the structure. We have whatever abatement cost that we've been conducting on the property. An abatement means removing something, or in, in other cases, it means mowing and picking up trash. We have lien filing fees, we have the actual demolition cost of the structure, attorney fees, foreclosures, fees, and, and there's all sorts of stuff that make up that billion dollars. But if you were to, and, and this is for an average size, what I'd call maybe a shotgun house, or a little bit, or a little bit bigger. A lot of older houses, especially on the south side, were older shotgun houses, your typical 1,200 to 1,500 square feet. If it's bigger than that, these costs go up for that piece of property. Again, these are just estimates, so these are not real fixed costs, you know, we just tried to put a number out, on it for you to, to get a grasp of what we're trying to get a hold of here. So what's our problems? What, we, we have a process now that we've been following, and that has presented some, some problems for us. We inspect the property, it doesn't get, it doesn't get repaired, we fine, we file liens as a result of those fines and, and or abatement, and many times eventually end up demolishing the piece of property. And then we continue to file liens on the property because a lot of times, even after we tear the structure down, it still doesn't get mowed unless we mow it. So this, this lets us incur expenses for property that we, we don't own. Somebody else owns. If we can't sell it or give it away, if somebody walks in the door tomorrow interested in a piece of property that we've torn down a structure on, that we've been mowing, picking up trash, all that stuff, we can't do a single thing with it because we don't own it. And then we have not, in the past, had a trigger to initiate a foreclosure action for us to take ownership of it at some point in time, or for it to be sold on the courthouse steps for somebody else to take it. And then finance has been looped into this as well because many times on these same properties, they've had unpaid, unpaid back taxes on it, and then they've initiated legal action on this same piece of property that we've been chasing. And sometimes they're able to, sometimes, John's been more successful than we have been about, about recovering money that's owed to us, but many times on a lot of these, he's not getting anywhere either. So we're, we're kind of tied together on, on these, on these different types of property. So what ends up happening, we keep paying for, we keep paying for a lot, in essence, over and over and over, many times what the value of the lot is, just by maintaining it over a period of time, especially if we've been mowing it since 1989. Other problems that we've encountered, we, we have seen where the, the property owner, and I think there's been an instance or two where the structure hadn't been torn down, it was still there, we foreclosed, the property owner, we foreclosed on, bought it back, and we had to start the process all over again. And as a result, we didn't get ta, you know, we didn't get taxes. We may have gotten a little bit of taxes out of it, maybe at that time, but, you know, we, this is not a, a common occurrence, but it does happen. And that, that, as you can imagine, would be pretty frustrating. For those properties that have structures we foreclosed, let's say I talked about that earlier, what, what we're indicating here is we're not going to foreclose on a piece of property that needs to be demolished and not have a demolition order on it. That way, if, if, if we put a demolition order on it, somebody else buys it, they buy it with that order on it, they have to tear it down. We typically see two kinds of structures throughout this process. We see those that need to be torn down, usually have no mortgage, we're placing a demolition order on them with foreclosure action to keep somebody from just buying it, trying to squeeze a few more dollars out of it. A whole lot of them that we see out there now, they're, they're literally falling down. You know, you can't even squeeze any more money out of it. It's fallen down, it's not even habitable at all. And then we see those that don't need to be torn down, and these are usually the foreclosure actions that have a bank mortgage tied to them. Banks foreclosing, they'll foreclose, and then, or, or many times, they'll protect their interest, and we, we don't have to worry about monitoring those too closely, even though we do check on them. But many times what we see is the bank will buy them back and then do something with them. So what do we hope is the solution, or what we're proposing to do? We're not changing our process, we're changing the order really in which we do it. We can end up on, we, we can do all these things, but we, we think that it might be a little bit more efficient to, to do it in a different way. We inspect, we fine if it's not repaired, file liens, and we place a demolition order on it first, and foreclose on it first, before that, that we spend that money. We cap the, the fines and liens at the assessed value of the, of the property, just because it does, doesn't make any sense to keep going. Plus, it causes our staff to have to do more work. We foreclose, and then we buy the property if the, if the situation warrants it, and then tear the structure down. Now, that will cause us to own more property, but we have the, we have more, we have more control over it at that time. If we're going to end up tearing it down anyway, and, and that's going to, that's a little bit of a deterrent, at least at, at this point, for people to buy the property to have to tear it down unless they've got some kind of really good interest in it. And we hope they do, we'd be glad for them to buy it. But in many cases, it's not going to be anybody interested in it because they're going to have to tear it down. At least if we're going to have to keep mowing it after we tear it down, we'll have some way, we'll have a way to get rid of it if we have parties interested, that become interested in it So the, the overarching goals for our program change are to incite property conversion, you know, as a deterrent to neglect, to responsible ownership, you know, people just letting property become dilapidated. They, they use it until they can't get any more out of it, and then they just walk away from it, and, and hopefully remove the city from some expenses associated with property neglect. We, we change the order of these things, we may still have some expenses, but at least we'll be able to do something with the property if people become interested. We want to reduce and eliminate unsafe structures throughout the city because, you know, we've, we've got 150 out there right now to be torn down. We don't want to see that number continue to grow. Hopefully, this will do that. And also maybe incite some reinvestment into property to increase valuation for our community. You know, that, that's going to, that leads to some benefits to the city as well. Makes the city look better, maybe increased tax, property taxes as a result of property being worth more. So, you know, the, we wanted to alert you to our, our program change of the direction we're wanting to go, that most likely we're going to end up owning some more prop, owning some property as a result, and that we believe that the, the city will benefit more from this process than from the process that we currently follow. What are your questions?
Questions? I know you've done a lot of work on this, and this is a difficult situation. So thank you for all that. It's a thorough explanation, it's a good plan. It's not a perfect plan, but it's the only one we've got. And there was, there were a lot of red areas on that map.
The map is, the map is pretty telling, I think, and that's why I thought it was really important for you all to be able to see that. We, we've got a lot of areas that need to be addressed. And I know Greg's got 16 structures out there right now to be torn down, but that's because they're falling down. They're, they're a safety, they're a hazard to the public as they sit there right now. And we've, we've...
Is that one big, is that one big building there, that large red area?
It could be. That is back taxes. That may or may not have a structure on it.
Okay. Could just be property.
Could just be property, right. And at the end of the day, if we end up with, you know, a lot of green space, there might be a development opportunity there. So we don't know that, but the possibility exists.
May I comment on a couple of things to, kind of the last point of the bullet point? Certainly, it's not the city's intention to landbank through this program or anything like that. We would hope to, to use the current buzz term, flip these properties or any properties that we require as quickly as possible, and put them in the private ownership for private use and, and hopefully reinvestment in them. If you take a look at this program, you know, clearly this involves property rights, and that's a very dear thing to everybody's heart and mind, and we're respectful of that. I think that this program change is driven by the situation that we are in as a community and as a department that is enforcing community standards. And the strategy that would be proactive rather than very much reactive, it, it doesn't make sense to continue to slap liens on property for decades at a time, and to continue to assume expenses of, of property maintenance for extended periods of time. So as the chief said, to be able to use this tool of foreclosure earlier in the process to hopefully incite reinvestment, whether it happens in the near term with the property owner of record or through a conversion of the property to somebody else, really accomplishes all that thing, all that. Let me point out that, as the chief point, displayed that it, it costs money to do foreclosure, so that is a, an item that we have to be able to budget for. And you might recall in the budget session last year, the budget we're in right now, we did increase that up and got that up some to a, an amount that allowed us to at least start down the road. I think it was $50,000 in, in the investment fund. And that would, that would need to be at that amount or more going forward to, to pursue this program and, and get out of that reactive, almost neglect mode ourselves, and get into something that's more proactive, that really, I think, in a real sense, gets us in a, in a stronger, more active relationship with the property owners. I mean, gosh, if we're maintaining a property for decades at a time, there must not be a whole lot going on between us and the property owner. So if it takes the use of a tool like foreclosure in the extreme for that to happen, then I think it's well that we have the ability to exercise that earlier on.
Any questions for Steve?
Pest impact firing, firing police. Abandoned homes get torn down are a whole lot easier to take care of after they've been torn down than...
It has a direct impact on us, you know. It, it helps reduce the number of potential fires out there. And, and I, I know my, my brothers and sisters in blue have to check vacant structures quite often, and they'll appreciate not having to have those out there as well, so.
Also, I'm sure that the, the neighborhood who's, has this dilapidated building, they don't want to see it there.
A lot of times, neighbors are glad we finally pulled up with a track hole. Thank you.
Okay, I just, we have Commissioner comments, but I'd like to say a few things. Tomorrow, the governor will be, no, Thursday, the governor will be here for groundbreaking at the Commerce Center at 1:30, Chad?
1:00.
1:00. And for the creation of eventually the 450 jobs with TeleTech. A new business got their CEO today, and they're opening in Lower Town, so we were happy to hear that. And they were very pleased and complimentary of our departments that worked with them to help them accomplish that goal. So thank you. And we had a meeting today with JP Kelly with Triangle Enterprises, and talked to him about reinvestment of his existing business and the opportunity to increase that in Lower Town. So it was a good day all the way around, a lot of exciting things going on, things on the move. So do you all have any comments tonight? Alright. I think we have, any public comments? We have an executive session, I believe. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Yes. Well...
Economic Development.
Thank you. I guess I need number five. Alright. Says, "I move the board go into a closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics. Specific proposal by business entity where public discussion of certain matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61811G."
Second. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
And we will not be coming back afterwards. So meetings adjourned. Thank you.